It looks like it's about the right time, so.
Temporary lots or temporary housing.
Cool. So if anybody, if you would like to silence your cell phones so we don't get any interruptions, it would be fantastic. And we'll have an invocation and then the pledge allegiance and Dan will lead us or give an invocation for us. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you please be with us tonight and please guide us to make the correct decisions and guide us in the direction of recovery for Paradise and everyone involved. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Okay. Yes, roll call, please.
President.
President.
Here.
Vice President.
Here. Thank you. Okay, so we have the approval of the Kent consent calendar. Was there any questions on that? Ward?
Yes, for minutes from the April 17 meeting, page six of your agenda packet correcting the name of Paradise Alliance Church. It's not First Alliance Church, it's Paradise Alliance Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward. Okay. Any comments on that? Okay. Would we, how about the minutes? So is there anybody that, no questions on the minutes? Okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion with the addition of the correction.
Very good. We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, invoices. Does anyone have any questions about the invoices?
Are you breaking up the consent calendar or did you accept the whole consent calendar?
Uh, the whole consent calendar?
Did you break it up?
Oh, right, you're right. I didn't, I didn't break it up. Okay. Sorry.
Did you want to?
Yes.
Okay. So was your approval for the just the minutes?
Sure, if we're gonna take them separately, is what you wanna do? Okay.
So which ones, which items did you want to review from the consent calendar?
I wanted to talk about the invoices.
So item C and D?
Yes.
Okay, so.
So you wanna pull those?
We're gonna remove item C and D for the consent calendar.
Right, thank you.
So the previous motion was limited to the minutes?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Do you wanna start with item C, Tuesday?
Yes. So do we have some questions on the invoices? No one has any questions?
I didn't.
Oh, really? Okay. I know I had a couple of questions, but I think, I think it's just due to the sampling, the sampling invoices, you know, the FGL and.
Those, those are on the check register, right? These are just for the annual, the M fees?
Okay, I guess I'm.
I think the invoices are.
Separate.
Separate.
Okay, okay, you're right. Oh, acceptance of the invoice, I'm sorry, I, yeah, I'm, I'm just way ahead here. You're right. Okay.
Are you good with C and D? Or do you wanna discuss this?
Okay. Let's discuss it, but apparently there's no discussion. Is that right?
It doesn't appear to be.
Whoever's happy with D.
Yes.
We approved D when, a while back?
No.
That's just, that's just an invoice? I mean, who?
That was.
Did they give you an estimate or did we get estimates?
It was directly paid through insurance.
Okay.
Insurance had a contract with them, a direct contract with them, so we went directly with them because insurance is gonna pay 100% of the cleaning fees.
Okay, so this invoice is basically for insurance?
Yep.
Okay.
Are those invoices, you know, the amounts seem kinda high to me. I, is that, I mean, is that standard? I mean, it's.
I've never priced.
I would've done it for $25,000.
With restoration.
I mean.
With restoration companies, especially in a natural disaster.
Right.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah, it's really, it's really bad. Okay, that's, I mean, because.
That's about a. Okay, so.
I mean, that's huge.
If I was going to bid that, we're talking about the old flower shop, right?
They did here, they did the flower shop, they did the courtyard, they did the treatment plant.
So, I mean, just for instance, like the flower shop, you could do it for about $20,000 in '17 would be profit. I mean, it's that ridiculous. It's just robbery, in my opinion.
So it's really industry standard. Like you said, it's during a disaster and prices seem to escalate and I know for folks like myself with a standing structure, we had bids for up to $35,000.
Yeah, a friend of mine paid 20 for just a house.
It's pricey.
And they came in and did.
Wipe the walls.
That's what any boss could do.
A typical deal is wash the windows, wipe the walls, replace the attic insulation and.
And they replaced all the ceiling tiles.
Yeah. If you have a T-bar, the ceiling tiles go too.
Yeah.
Stuff like that. Clean the carpet and you're out the door.
They did prioritize this, so they got on this fairly quickly. When everybody was trying to get their buildings cleaned, they did ours and prioritized them. I was very happy with their service.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, is there, is there any standard that they have to meet to be inspected to do, for their work? I mean, is their work inspected by anybody?
Just us.
Okay, there's no standard for.
Just the consumer.
There are associations and the technical may be certified, but it's still by chance.
Yeah, but I mean, there's nothing that says, if you don't do this, we're not gonna pay the bill. There's no, there's no legal.
I mean, we came back and had a few change, like, oh, you missed this and you missed that.
Right. There's no certification that this building is certified to be habitable again or what?
Well, they're certified by associations, but not by the state.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's not a, like, there's not a carpet cleaner's license. Most of the guys have carpet installer licenses so that they can say that they're licensed.
Oh, I see.
But like California State Licensing Board doesn't have a designation for cleaners.
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
So usually what they'll do is they'll go to an association, like what you're.
Yeah.
They'll go to an association, get certified with them, and then they put that sticker on their van and then they're licensed or certified.
Okay. I see.
It's really kinda the old west.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Yep.
It was noticeable.
But I think if you were to damn it, Karen, if you damn annual fees were being over the top, you must have just taken those up because it's an emergency.
I can explain to you why those have caught up if you'd like, because the other emergency at Warville Dam, so they did a mass blanket of 100 spillways to get studies done on all those spillways. We had two of those 100 and they don't have the staff to go through all the studies that have been presented to them from a Phase 1 study standpoint, so they had to go hire staff, which meant they had to raise the dam fees.
Of course. Cause of the fact.
So it is due to a disaster, just not this disaster.
Very interesting. Okay, so now we can approve the consent, consent calendar C and D? Is that what we need to do now?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, public participation, is there anybody who would like to speak on?
Thank you. Good evening, Board. A couple of things here, public participation, I know you hold me to five minutes. I missed last month, I was gone. I was representing the Buick County Fire Safety Council and the Town of Paradise on behalf of the campfire in Oregon at a symposium called, Could Central Oregon Become Another Paradise? And the answer was obviously yes. During the course of the day, several workshops and presentations were represented as from the Thomas Fire, the Tubbs Fire, Mendel Complex Fire, and the campfire, myself. The consensus was, yes, Central Oregon can become another paradise, with several exclamation points. They have had six years of drought, they have suffered financially with emergency services, they have suffered many other ways there, they have a high homeless population, which has been setting a lot of illegal fires, arson, basically, and on and on. Not exactly the same situation we had, but there's only one road in central Oregon, Highway 97. And if they have to evacuate and they have to use that road, they have a very major problem. And we're very, very curious about the issues that we had with our basic evacuation and have asked Sheriff Honi and our chief, Eric Reinbold, on feedback from them about how well we did. And of course, as you know, some people didn't make any, people died in their cars trying to evacuate. However, at the conclusion of that, they felt that what we were doing now is probably the most reasonable thing to be considering. How do you rebuild your town so that it is actually fire safe? One of the issues that came up, however, was, because this has happened in other communities, especially small ones, like here, we ran out of water. Where I was located, we ran out of water at 3:10, the hydrant was dry. Same thing had happened in 2008. If you review the FEMA recommendations after the 2008 fires, which, you know, went on for six months here, you've been here a long time, you'll recall that we had several issues that came up after that that were specifically addressed by FEMA, one of which, which is technical sheet number 17, a reasonable and continuous supply of water for fire suppression and fighting fires, which we did not have. So 10 years go by between 2008 and 2018 and we haven't made any changes in that regard. Now, this board, slightly different people, several months ago agreed that we would accelerate the change in replacement of pipes from the size they were to the size they're supposed to be for full flow. However, if we don't have a pressurized system, kinda like what happened with the Tubbs Fire, and unlike the system that Redding has where they did have continuous pressure, we could face the same problem again if we have a serious wildfire and we can't fight it because of lack of water. We probably won't have the evacuation problems in using fire trucks to evacuate people who have given up their vehicles, primarily because, well, we're not gonna have that many people 10 years from now, maybe even 20. According to the Pacific Region President of the Fire, Retired Fire Chiefs Association, for this kind of a calamity, only 10% Paradisians will return. That was confirmed by your husband.
Yep.
That means the people that are moving in here will not be Paradisians, they'll be from LA, the Bay Area, who knows where else. Or they'll say, I ain't moving there because, and they'll think of a lot of reasons. Shame on them for that. We have an awful lot of reasons to be repopulating Paradise. We move along. So I just wanted to cover that with you. At the Town of Paradise council meetings, there are certain things that come up there about financing and of course, many people have been spending money other than in Paradise. And Tuesday, first Tuesday in November last year, they passed a 10-year extension to Measure C, the half-ince, half-cent, half a percent sales tax increase, which means it doesn't expire till 2031. But most people are shopping someplace else, so we're not contributing well enough. And I think it's the right thing to do when you go to the council meeting, to give them money based on what you have spent outside the Town of Paradise, and they accept that. In fact, last night, they accepted over $100,000 worth of donations. Some of that is people who are contributing because they just think it's fair to help make up the difference, what's been missing because people are shopping someplace else. It seems to go along with that, that if people wanna use water here and we don't have meters or somebody to read them, frankly, it's a good way to save labor, why don't you let the people using the water decide, you know, I think I've used 3,000 gallons this month, can I pay you for it? Don't you need the money? Let your customers decide, because right now the water's free. I mean, I can just let my hose run and run and run, that would be foolish on my part. When I irrigate it, I'm only gonna use what I need to, because I'm getting tired of going down to the creek with a bucket. So it'll make sense for me to pay you something for the water I'm using. So if you're not reading a meter, I'd be happy to read it. I'd be happy to tell you how much. Just tell me how often you'd like to get money from me. I gave $11 to the town, $11.10 to the town last night, my Measure C contribution. I'd just like to know that. Lastly, this really, really bothered me. Those of you that are avid readers of the Paradise Post, you saw that I wrote a letter and it was published in the Saturday edition, which was very complimentary to Kevin, PID, and the management of the website here. Unfortunately, today, the feedback I got after last night's meeting was embarrassing. They considered me a traitor, that I was a shill for PID. I don't like that, and I didn't like it one bit. Some of those were from Facebook and some of those were phone calls. And I told people as best I could, no, I think when you come to all the organizations we're dealing with right now, PID is still probably one of the leaders in the bunch. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that, Ward.
Thank you, Ward. Appreciate it very much. Okay, we can go to the staff and facility report?
Yep, so a lot of the information came out last night, I don't know if I made it over there or not, but about the progress of the recovery plan, what we've done. The last three weeks, we have sampled over 150-ish samples. We haven't got results back on all of them. We have gotten results back on a lot of the standing structures. We did issue a potability letter last night to the Fire Station 35, our first letter of potability. We're gonna start issuing a lot more based on the research that we've done. We're going to focus on standing structures as our go-to for coming up for, for sampling. We have a public information, or a public, a press release going out, that you guys have a copy of, it's an email copy. If Ward wants a copy, there's some here.
Did you get the notes on the website and what's back here?
Yes. I'm interested to read it. In the ongoing efforts, the recovery efforts, PID, working with our mutual aid partners, is planning an intensified water quality sampling for the first two weeks of June. We'll be sampling services at standing structures, including homes, business, and temporary housing, as well as locations which have been issued building permits. If you have one of these, if you are one of these customers and can have your service shut off from June 1st to June 15th, so if you're not living there, if you have a temporary service, or if you can just have it shut off, we're gonna have them call PID by May 24th and we'll do our best to accommodate all requests. So we're gonna gather all this information from people that have the ability to have their sample, their, their structure sampled, and we're going to use our public aid or mutual aid coming in from San Francisco that are all like high-quality plumbers that are used to this type of work, that are willing to work long hours and can bust things out to go through and just start hitting all the standing structures that we can find in Paradise. We think we can get over 600 done in one, two-week period. And that includes temporary housing for trailers, so we're not gonna discriminate against them. Those might be a little bit harder to lift the potability on those because those are from burnt lots and they're, what we saw from last night is those have the highest percentage of contamination, where the standing structures are the lower percentage of contamination. If we do find contamination in a actual standing structure, that'll be our first priority to actually replace that service line and put it back in to that standing structure. For a trailer that has contamination, they might be a little bit lower on the totem pole from coming back to get that accomplished. So that's where we're at with this. We're gonna continue sampling in the weeks between in setting things up. There's been quite a few houses sampled with, that have temporary tanks already on their property, so that we've already sampled them, we're just waiting for the results to come back. And we're gonna focus on the business corridor, we're gonna focus on Skyway and Clark Road, and we're gonna start clearing all of those. Those have really good flows, which we've seen, so there's a low probability of the standing structures having contamination in there. And we've already done a lot of sampling on Skyway. So we're gonna continue doing that and we're gonna continue issuing letters. So the letter that's going to, that we're gonna issue is, congratulations, your service is potable, and we're going to attach the results of the sampling to it. So that they have a basis of why their results are good. That'll include the main out in front of their home and it'll include their service line. So there's two samples. So every sample that we take, there's always gonna be two samples, a service line sample and a mainline sample. We are working with our partners at DDW and Environmental Health and EPA to come up with requirements for the people to do in-home sampling. So, and we're hoping to partner with them so that they might be able to change their protocol if there's a clean sample on our side on how to sample their home versus if there's a contaminated sample on our side, how to sample their home. So there might be two sampling protocols based on what our results are. So that's where we're at with that. We've been working diligently with FEMA and Cal OES to try to get what they call this 428 Plan, which is a pilot program that was used back in, for Hurricane Sandy. I don't believe it's ever been used in California, but it's a pilot program that states that if you get, if you have a project and an engineer comes in and says, this is how much it's gonna take to fix the project, FEMA just write you a check. There's no PA work through it, there's none of the reimbursement portions where you're having to do project after project after project. You can lump all your projects into one big project and they write you a check for it.
So then in theory, you would expect that you wouldn't have items come up later, three years from now, that are not reimbursable?
Correct. So it's gotta be really sound. So those ones that have risk, you take out of the 428, the ones that don't have risk, you put into the 428. Any savings you get, you actually get to use those for hazard mitigation funds, so you can use those to, for other projects within your district. So they're not, they don't come back and ask for the savings. The other positive is you can, there's a longer time period you have to, to finish those projects. So let's say we get a 428 to go replace all the service lines of burnt structures, of the burnt properties, that's one of the things we're asking for.
What about cost overruns?
Cost overruns is on us. Okay? So that's why you have to be really positive on your numbers, right? But if we get a 428 project that says we're gonna go replace every service line in the district on any burnt structures, it's easy to calculate, it's easy to know how much that costs, and we can do that over a 10-year period with our own crews. So we could use that 428 money to pay for our own crews to go do that work.
So you've gotta be really careful on your pricing, because like Wilkins Backflow Preventers are gonna go through the roof just because of our demand.
Right. So yes, you have to, you have to take into consideration, you're allowed to put contingencies in there, you're allowed to do all the normal engineering type of pricing in there, but it allows you to control how you do your projects. So there's a lot of advantages. It's new, it's been advantageous for some of the agencies that used it over in the East Coast, and so we're trying to look into it to make sure, if it's not advantageous for us, we're not gonna use it, but it's something that we're looking into to try to, try to use. And it's, there's complications.
You have, you have to apply for that? Is that what you have to do?
You, you have to, it's not an application per se, it's a decision. So it's, if your project, you feel it's most advantageous for you, you make the decision to go down the 428, well then you still have to argue your costs, right? So you now have a FEMA representative sitting and going line by line on your costs with your representative in there, and they're gonna try to nickel and dime. So it's a negotiation factor, right? So you're negotiating everything kind of upfront on your, on how you're gonna do things. So there's some complications to it, but there could be some real big advantage, especially in our situation, being that we could then do a lot of the work ourselves and not have more savings. And, and, and not running against these time crunches that FEMA has for, for getting projects closed out and so on. Where Ross is actively involved in that, we've been in meetings with FEMA over the last couple days and going back and forth, and so that's, that's the FEMA issue. The other thing that you might have seen was, the governor's May revise had $10 million for campfire, campfire agencies in there. According to all of my sources, 7 million's earmarked for PID. We asked for 21, they earmarked 7. The governor has said that he knows that's not enough. So what we're thinking is it's a placeholder for when the Senate May revise comes out and the Assembly's May revise comes out, that we're going to conference over that number to see if we can get it bumped up.
Should've asked for 63.
Exactly. Well, our first one, our first one we put in was 100 million.
We're only gonna get a third.
So, so we're really working on trying to come to some type of middle area there with them. Their main concern is the viability of PID after they give you the money, right? How are you gonna survive? We have what we, we're calling the Year 4 Project, which is the intertie with Cow Water Chico. And so we've sat down with the county, we've sat down with Cow Water Chico, everybody's very interested in this project. It's been conceptual, there hasn't been a lot of like boots on the ground or any kind of feasibility studies done. The county is out, actually Paul Goslin from the Water Resources is looking, looking for grant funding right now to do a feasibility study. Our thought process is that we would be in contract with the county, the county then would take that water and distribute it out to the GSA users of that water, which is Chico. Chico is in a depressed ground, aquifer, there is a depression under there, so this would actually support their efforts for that aquifer, you know, lifting up that aquifer, but also for the build-out of Chico too. There's a lot of pressure on housing right now too. So, so there's a win-win on both sides. We have the ability to, to deliver the water, they have the need for it, the county would be our intermediary, and then it would, in the long run, the county is looking at moving Table A water out of Lake Orville, out of there and moving it into our treatment plant and sending that Table A water down to Chico, once we as Paradise rebuilds and needs all of our allotment of our water rights. So there's, there's, it's a double opportunity for them too, to that, so that all that water is, that we're sending there, there's a long-term goal to continue that water even if we can't be the one that provides it. So we're building our case, we, we sent a letter off, Dustin from Manazian has been our, kind of our lobbyist down there, he's doing a great job. We sent our letter off to both Senator Nielsen and Gallagher's office today to support our two-year or three-year ask, whatever they wanna give us, to say, look, here's our viability, here's how we're going to survive, just give us this money to get us through this process and then we'll be able to survive through this. So we're hoping that is falling on, you know, good ears and, and we're getting a lot of traction, it feels like there's a lot of traction there, and just that there's money set aside means that we have a chance, right? So we're in the governor's budget, which is the best one to be in, and then we're now trying to conference that to get it a little better. That's where we're at and we're, I'm sure I'll be down in Sacramento a few times in the next couple months, just trying to push, push, push for that money. So the other thing is, we're, we're in contact with Senator Feinstein's office, they're gonna send a rep up here to tour Paradise Irrigation District, so they understand what we're going through with FEMA issues, what we're trying to accomplish with the 428, the public health and safety, the public confidence of the water system, to help maybe push FEMA to the point where they're not gonna nickel and dime us on certain things, so that we're getting what we're asking for and that there's not these things that we're going to, at the end of the day, that there's not gonna be this public confidence in the water system. Kamala Harris's office is also in, we're in contact with them too, to get their representative also up here, so, or go down and visit them. So we've been busy doing that. Customer service has been going crazy. We have two temps in there and then we just hired a brand-new individual in there and they're kicking butt and they've been doing a great job. The backflow interim water has been going crazy, there's a lot of requests for that, so there's a lot of people that are trying to get water on their property for debris removal and for irrigation purposes is the biggest one. And then we have a lot of people that are looking to, to pull permits and get rebuilding. So I'm, Ross will talk about our finances and about some of the, where are we at from people disconnecting from, from PID versus people holding on to their 2149 service charge? And. I think that's it.
How many people have come in and requested the interim? Just curious.
I didn't get the number yet. I would say, I would say it's over 100 though.
Oh.
Yeah. I mean, we're getting people, and they're paying, writing a check right there and they're excited about getting that water on their property, so there's a lot of people that have. And then we had that one guy who bought those four, he came in today, we talked to him and he, he left happy.
Oh, good.
That's great.
How are you accommodating people? Are you sending them a form or are they coming in?
They're just walking in or they're calling, are we getting them through phone calls too?
So if I call you, you could send me a form?
So, if I call you, you could send me a form?
It's, it's, all you're doing is paying a fee, and we're creating a service order internally, and that service order is then sent up there, and they're going to go out and install it for you.
Okay. If I call you, do I give you my Visa number? I mean, how do we do this? That's how, that's how you do it? Okay. Just so people know that it's...
You can give me your Visa number if you want. Can you checkbook with you?
$200, let me know. Did you watch the, the PID last night?
No.
There was a gentleman that came in and wanted to hook up temporary water. He found out what backflow preventer we're using. He went out and bought four, not realizing that PID needed to do the engineering and install on it. And he was very agitated. And Jim calmed him down, asked him to come down, talked to him after the meeting, and they came to a...
Yep.
...conclusion...
Yes.
...to, you know, use his equipment or...
He actually is going to return his own equipment that he bought. He's going to use our equipment because it was cheaper than like the equipment he bought.
Okay. So, anyway, that's the background on that.
One of the things that came up last night, Kevin, again, was that people are asking for that sampling protocol, you know? Is Sammy, are they going to get that?
So, it's, that is out of our purview at this point. They have set up a CAL-oes task force to come out with protocol on how to sample your house. There is a internal fight over whose responsibility that is, and it's become a very big issue within the CAL-oes.
Amazing.
U County.
Huh?
Two and a half counties.
There's EPA's involved, DDW's involved, County Health Department's involved, and there, there's a big push in the, I know Senator Nielsen and Gallagher sent a letter to the Department of Drinking Water, asking them to come up with the protocol.
Good. That's good.
Yes. Now, it's through the request of, of us and through the request of multiple agencies, including the county.
They know it needs to be expedited, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. Perfect.
Any other questions?
Treasurer's report. Ross?
All right. Well, just wanted to kind of give you guys an update on what I've been up to the past few months since I've been here and highlight some of the items in the treasurer's report. Starting off, our cash position is still pretty strong. $4 million, $9,000. A lot of that's been through some of the FEMA reimbursements we've been getting that have supplemented some of our expenditures. Our debt service standpoint, we received defer, deferral on our Capital One principal payments. It was $96,000 that was due May 1st, was deferred until November 2028. And on our BBT loan, the principal of $258,000, which was due April 1st, was deferred until April 1st of 2022. So, kind of buying us some time on that to, to secure some more funding. From an operational standpoint, as Kevin mentioned, we have been allowing customers to permanently disconnect, and we've been reversing the readiness-to-serv charge of the 2149 a month. Through the end of April, we had 1,195 customers that chose to disconnect, and that amount is reflected on page 23 for the service charge. You'll see in April, there's a negative revenue value of $17,000. So, that's basically refunding the customers who paid the 2149 or the 4298 for those first two months and then chose to disconnect, and we refunded them that, that cost.
I was wondering what that was.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that's what that is. And then, also, the customers that had a balance, a credit balance prior, and they chose to disconnect, we refunded them that as well. So, that's that piece. Also, just been working really closely on the accounts payable process since we had our accounts payable person leave back in March. Yeah. So, just trying to dial in that process and fill that gap in the meantime until we fill that position. Working closely on payroll, been working on the approval process, getting to know all the ins and outs of that, filing our payroll taxes for Q4 '18 and Q1 of '19, and then just beginning to prepare some audit documentations for our June 30 of 2018 audit, trying to get that stuff ready and share up our year end balances. And then, continuing to work closely with Kevin on some of the FEMA stuff, securing funding and looking at options that way. We did receive an additional $608,000 this month through FEMA compared to last month. That's basically for the mutual aid invoices that we've been going through with Cal Water. And with that, we've basically are required now to prove out all the expenditures, expenditures we've had for all that mutual aid and basically labor, equipment usage, and material usage. And so, I've been working on gathering all that support, right, providing that to FEMA in order to open up more funds on the projects that have already been obligated to us. That's pretty much all I have. You guys have any questions, too?
I'll step in. One sec. Ross has been a superstar. He stepped into a position that is extremely difficult.
Yes.
He has taken over the payroll and understanding the payroll within a very short period of time. He's done, he's actually doing accounts payable because no one else in the office has the, the ability to do it. He's stepped into understanding the FEMA, the ins and outs of the FEMA process, the grants portal, all the, the intricacies of trying to get FEMA funding and the documentation and understanding the documentation and pushing the documentation. The expedited PW is what he's talking about. We had an expedited one that now we have to shore up to get the additional 50%, which is the payment. He's working through that, that process, getting, working now through the insurance claims and understanding the insurance claims. So, he's done an outstanding job, and he's, major kudos to Ross and all these things.
Thanks.
We did warn him, though, didn't we?
We did.
I remember sitting on that interview. Yeah. He said, "Are you sure you want to do this?"
Yeah. It's all becoming clear to me now. What you were talking about.
We didn't lock the door.
Right. Kevin, you just took that big box and took it from your desk and set it on his desk, right?
No. I just, I just gave him my office. I didn't even change anything over. I said, "Here it is." And then, I came back like in, like three or four days. It was clean. I'm like, "I've never seen my office like this before."
That's great.
All right. Here's my question. How many, how many customers have sent you 21 bucks a month?
So, right now, with the 1,100 disconnects, there's still about 9,000 that are continuing service that send in the 2149.
Okay. 9,000 people sent you 21 bucks?
Yeah.
Okay. Out of, out of how many potential?
10,500.
2.4 million annually. 2.4 million annually.
Yeah. But I'm not one of them.
See, now, you're just showing off.
No, it's just because I'm...
My question is, how come I'm not, how come I'm not one of them? I haven't gotten a bill. I know you know my address because the board minutes got to my house.
Oh.
Comes every other month.
How many, how many are there? You four in the same boat?
We, we don't know the exact amount. That's going to be one of the questions that you're going to see probably in the next, probably the next board meeting, is what we do with delinquent accounts.
Right.
So, people that haven't paid not only their 2149 or the 41 or 42, whatever it is, is, but also the people that haven't paid their bill from pre-campfire, right? And we have the ability to lean their property and put it on their property taxable. You know, it's not always the most popular decision, but it is the ability and what we've done in the prior years with delinquent accounts. So, you know, we've tried to give people the opportunity to disconnect and try to give people the opportunity to, to make a decision on that, so...
Well, I, I, I mean, I discount the people that just left.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, just left the state, abandoned the property. I think my next-door neighbor did that because nothing's changed since the fire. They have, they haven't shown up. They haven't done anything. I think they moved back to Colorado, but, so, I don't expect those people to, to even be found. But I got to assume there's a lot of people that want to be found if, if you can get their address.
We've, we've found a lot of people with a lot of addresses, and we've done a, we've done the surveys, we've done the online and the door surveys. We've done, every time someone calls or walks in, we ask them to update their address. Every time we have communication or any type of connection with a customer, we ask for updated information for address and updated information for phone.
I need a note.
If you update mine, I promise I'll send you a, I won't give you my Visa card number, but I'll send you a check.
Okay. We will do that.
Right. Ross, I just had a question on page 22.
Yeah.
Down on the, in the first column there, miscellaneous, and you go across, it's 2,973,00275. What, what is that? What do those monies represent right there?
So, that's all of our insurance proceeds and proceeds from FEMA.
Oh, that's what I thought. Okay. I had FEMA question mark, CAL-oes maybe?
It's, it's FEMA money.
It's FEMA.
Run su CAL-oes, but it's all FEMA. I mean, 90% is FEMA.
Could we delineate that a little better, maybe, or?
We can.
I, I don't know. Just because, because this is going to be going on for quite a while.
Yeah. You could definitely make that...
Yeah. Just so we have, you know, grasp clarity.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anything else? No? Do we make, have a motion to accept the...
Yep.
Treasurer's report?
I move to accept.
Second? Second?
Treasurer's report for April 2019?
Yes.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
The other thing to expect in the near future, too, just part of the treasurer's report, is Water Works will probably have a contract or some change, change order coming up shortly, just based on scope of work and what they've accomplished, and looking forward as to how hands-on, boots-on-the-ground they're going to be. I think they'll have a change order coming up soon.
Okay.
Be cognizant.
Now, we can get to approval checks.
We have some questions.
Well, how about you, Coach? Anybody have something to talk about on the checks?
No.
I do not.
Okay. So, nothing on checks?
Okay. I, I did a question. We haven't gotten any invoices on the, from, actually, from Water Works on that, or have we?
When, is it paid, is it paid this, or is it paid in?
I think it'll show up in the next, next month.
Next May.
Okay.
What was it, 72?
Yeah.
72,000.
72,000.
Yeah. So, what we're doing, and Ross is working with FEMA, is creating a project specifically for that project, which is project engineering, and so that we're going to be able to submit those invoices directly into that so it's not mucking up some other stuff. And then, we're going to get fully reimbursed, knowing that's going to be an ongoing large project that we're going to have.
That's great. That'll be good. Okay. That's all I had, actually. Can we have a motion to approve the checks?
Move the cruel general fund check numbers 52984 through 53087 for the month of April 2019, excluding void check 53051.
Thank you, Bob. Second on that. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Legal report. Emily?
Hi. So, Kevin took my legal report.
I did?
Thanks. No, that's fine. I was like, "Wait a second. I was going to give you an update on the May revise on the 10 million that have been set aside to support local communities affected by the campfire." Kevin talked about that, about our office and Dustin in particular's work to use this budget committee process to get, you know, the second, third, I don't know, fourth year? Second, third? Right. But I don't need to repeat what he said, so I think we're good. We do have an item on the agenda for closed session, so I will save for a closed session.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Yes, Ward. Go ahead.
Since we don't allow public comment at the closed session, I'd like to make one now, and this is for the benefit of our new board members. In closed sessions, you're going to be discussing 17 CVO 2546, which has gone on now for three years and is not over until you get to 2020, which is shame on the system. I know how that works. You probably don't know that I made a presentation to Justice Mossberger and, per the clerk's request, submitted a writing synopsis of what the People of Paradise feel is necessary. And just to sum that up, since this is the People's Water Company, we don't want any responsibility for any award paid in this claim. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward.
Just a clarification. We do offer public participation in, before we go into closed session.
Okay. Oh, before closed session. Okay. Now, we both know. Thank you. Okay. Unfinished business, there's none to report, so how about new business?
So, item number 9A, I'm going to recommend tabling. I've talked to Legal and I've talked to Jen over there, and I think that we need a little bit of time, maybe, to revise the ask of what she's looking for. And so, if we can table that and then bring it up for a, an agenda on the next agenda, I think we'll have a better direction on how to move forward with this.
The lease expired a couple of years ago now, so it's time to address that and kind of stop operating under the expired lease and, and formalize whatever the party's intentions are going forward.
Did the cleanup crews do a good job over there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. One guy fell through the roof and broke his ankle.
Oh, no.
Seriously?
Yeah. Yeah. Just in case you need to know.
I've stopped asking questions. I don't want the answer, too.
I don't mean laugh, right? That's right. Oh, geez.
Need a motion to table it?
Yes. Do we, do you need a motion for that, or?
So, I, I wanted to say, I have to abstain from this, anything with this. I have a personal relationship with this individual, so I'll just abstain from any action.
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Well, if we need a motion, we'll make a motion.
Do we need a motion, George?
Yeah. It's just cleaner that way.
Okay. Do we have a motion to table?
I'll move we table item 9A on the agenda until next month.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Motion passes, thank you.
Does that mean it's all for a month?
How about new business 9B?
Yeah, so this is a opportunity for, for nominations for a non-enterprise member. So you guys can nominate a non-enterprise member. Looks like there's two non-enterprise members that are, that have been nominated.
Correct.
Or you can vote for one. Tom Landau or...
Do you know a history on this, as far as?
Tom wasn't...
Tom, Tom was, so what I, I thought I read was Tom had resigned, but then he's back on as a nomination. So I didn't, I, I was confused by that.
Who is this, city?
He's an interim, no, he's formerly the interim town or city manager for Orville.
Right. So I don't think he is eligible to be the non-enterprise member at this point. I don't know.
I was just curious if anyone had any history on it before we?
I was asking the same question.
You don't have to vote for anybody also. I mean, it's, it's an opportunity.
Well, I need, yeah, to have a forum, maybe 21...
But they, they're asking for participation in the vote, right.
I don't have the background on either.
Okay.
To know.
What do you think, Paul? Okay, I guess we're going to abstain on that.
I think, I think if you wanted to vote for somebody, it would probably be Al because I don't think Tom is eligible at this point being a non-enterprise manager.
But when did he become the interim manager? He's been the interim manager for at least, well, since the beginning, I can say at least till, since November, I don't think longer. And they just, they just sent an email on Friday, May 3rd, and it doesn't say anything about him being no longer eligible.
I don't think that he's...
Yeah.
Is he on?
That's interesting.
I don't know, I'm just putting together what I'm reading. I know that he's interim and that they're trying to get someone in there permanently, but I don't know.
He's still a board member then on card?
Is there an expiration date on this?
There is, I think.
Yeah, it's already passed.
July, they have to, well, they've, they've extended it to July...
July 5th.
5th, yeah, so.
So could we tape?
So we could do our due diligence and come back next meeting?
I would, I would record that.
That's a good one. Oh, Ward.
Isn't the other choice Al Magrian, the Paradise guy? Well?
I don't know.
Well, we don't, I think what we're saying, we don't, we don't know much about the background of this or even the candidates. I think that's kind of what we're talking about here.
Tom Landau is still listed as a...
Could this be brought up again in June since they have till July?
I, I would agree. I think we need, I don't think we have enough information to be informed.
Since we can still beat the deadline, I'd rather come back and file.
Table something else?
Yeah. I move to table something else.
You're moving to table it?
Moving to table 9B till the June meeting.
I would second that.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you.
We're going to have a full agenda.
We're just kicking the can down the road here tonight.
We're going to have the same agenda in July, or in June.
Just don't add, just don't add anything to it and we're good to go.
But we'll know a lot more.
I don't, I can't reconcile the two.
Our Janus job, easy, that's my...
Okay. I think we're at 10 committee reports. And I think the only meeting we've had is a community relations meeting and Shelby was at the meeting with myself and Ward Habril was there, of course, and I don't know, we, would you like to talk a little bit about it, or?
No, I'll let you do it. You have your notes in front of you.
Yeah, okay. Mickey, we just talked about the participation and the setup for the May 14 meeting, which we had yesterday, last night. So we talked about that. And we were trying to figure, at the time, we were talking about how we could get the word out about that meeting, notifications, that kind of thing. And the pilot, we talked about the pilot sampling, part of the recovery program that has started. We also talked about, Mickey talks about the needs assessment survey that was done, the house-to-house needs assessment survey that was completed. That was great. PID newsletter, our newsletter's going to be back in the next billing. And I had a question, when is the next billing going, is it?
It'll be, should be like this week. It's complete for the first cycle and next week I believe for the second cycle.
Great, great. So one, one nice thing about the newsletter, Mickey's doing it, it's all being done in-house, so we're saving a little, some money on the, you know, consultant helping us, I guess you might say. So that's good. One item we talked about was media inquiries. I know we've talked about here at the board that I've gotten calls and I think Bill said that he's gotten some calls. So one of the things we, we talked about at the, at the community relations meeting was that we really need to have a single, single voice. It's even in our policy manual, actually, that all media requests should go to the district manager, go to you, Kevin. So it's just, I just kind of a reiteration, reminder that if we get a call from the media, we're just, we're going to give them your number and bounce it over to you. So, so it's all, we have one voice and we don't get mixed messages out there, right? Okay. And then the last thing we talked about was the PID demonstration garden. And the Ward organized the Paradise Garden Club to come in and clean up and it, it really looks great and appreciate that, Ward, and thanks to the garden club members for doing that. And you, you also, they also volunteered to continue doing some work, replacing some plants and maybe the vines, that's what we talked about out there. And one of the things that we, we had asked quite a while ago is if it's possible to remove that pine tree, the ponderosa that's weeping sap out there. It's, it's the one right over there by the, where we wanted to put the bench. So, so we were wondering, my thought was if we got into the tree removal on our right of way, so maybe we might be able to include that tree in, it's just a thought.
We can't mix.
Oh, we can't mix because it's reimbursable? Okay, got it.
And we want to turn it into a pair.
Oh.
But we'll, we'll figure something out on that tree eventually, but, and that was pretty much, pretty much the difference, unless Shelby, you'd like to?
No, I think you captured it.
Okay, okay. Ward?
Well, I did want to follow up on that because as a longtime member of the Paradise Garden Club and one of our activities is community beautification, and we had some influence in developing this demonstration garden. There are very few places now where we can form work parties and go do things in a town of paradise. For, for instance, the county has asked us to hold off until they consider a new landscape plan for the mound at the library, which is now a little weedy and seedy, where we would normally go and pull weeds on behalf of the county and not having public works to be able to do that. As well as some other areas, we're also consulting with the county's consultant on the new landscaping outside of the supervisor's office by the Veterans Center. But at our last garden club meeting, we did agree that one of the places that we prefer to work is here, because this is very much for the public. And as people begin to return to town and think, "What should I be growing here now? We got more sun. Do we have any water? What kind of terrain do I have now?" We want them to see what does survive and does well. So we want them to come back and see that this is a good demonstration of what will work in Paradise. So, plus, the Paradise Garden Club members, they all have insurance through the California State Garden Clubs Association, so it's not a problem for us to be here, but we would notify you or Kevin or somebody, "Hey, we got three people coming Saturday morning, we're going to be here from 9 to 12. We're going to be cleaning up, pulling weeds, we got some new plant, blah, blah, blah." So that will be happening. We have other places in town where we've been asked to, to do some either consultation or some work, but most of our garden club members feel more of a responsibility here than any of the other places that we haven't been lately. Today, we did purchase a tree to replace the three that were removed from one of the triangles. We had money contributed to us earlier to be able to do that. It was a matter of waiting for the town and the county to remove what was there that was part of their responsibility. The town fixes the irrigation system, the county hauls away what was on their property that we cut down for them. So it's, you know, it's interesting how it all works, but we did purchase a tree, it's a dogwood, it's going, and it was purchased locally, and it will be replanted there, so we're making an improvement there. We have a couple other things that we're going to be doing, but just to sum up, many people in the garden club that like these kinds of work projects do prefer being here. Thank you for your...
Thank you, Ward. Appreciate it very much. Okay, so we have director's comments. Dan, would you like to?
I was actually telling Kevin tonight, I, I went and splurged, I made my first trip to Krispy Kreme the other day and brought a box of donuts to the guys. Got here at 6:30. I was the last one here. I was just thoroughly impressed with the, the guys. Upbeat, dedicated, ready to, I mean, ready to go. And the camaraderie between them was impressive. I left here, I went to the treatment center. They were really happy about the donuts. They thought that was cool. I toured with Bill and the treatment plant. You know, I've been around it, but never toured it. Was impressive. It's, and he loves his work. He just loves his work. It was just, it was just reassuring and very impressive that your staff, your crews, and their mindset is, you know, gung ho, they're ready to go. It's very cool. That's it.
Great. Shelby?
I just wanted to say how impressed I was with last night. I felt like Sammy did such a nice job presenting really complicated information in a way that anyone can understand it. He has a really a gift at de-escalating situations as they start to escalate. And it was really the visual aids he provided, it was just easy for people. I think it was a very different energy than the first meeting. And so that was positive and glad to see. So I was overall really pleased.
Well?
I think the talent of the meetings has really changed over the years since the shouting messes we used to see in years past. And I think, you know, the leadership is, is just changed so much that I, and we do get phone calls, you know, regardless of what you just said, we do get phone calls. We do run interference for you, believe it or not. I'm not going to, I'm not going to pawn everything off on you, but the tone has changed. It's people asking for information, hey, thanks, they're actually saying, "Thanks." You know, you say, "Well, we had to change this plan to this plan because of this happened." And they go, "Yeah, we understand." It's, it's, the whole tone is, is, you know, everybody's kind of come together, just trying to get this town back up and running again. And you don't see the, like, remember not too long ago, you know, people came in here and they're complaining and complaining, now they're not. They're, they're listening. And, and when we get our calls, I don't know about your experiences, but, you know, people are just genuinely interested in getting this place rebuilt and they're not mad, they're not upset, they understand what happened and they understand that, you know, we're trying, we're trying to get all the help we can from any agency that's willing to partner some money for us and, and give us a hand. And that's, it's, it's, it's just a good attitude right now, I think. And, you know, your staff just promotes that. I don't hear any personnel-type complaints. I don't hear, you know, I don't get a phone call, "You know what, that guy told me." I don't get any of that. It's just, it's just a good, good feeling, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I just agree with what everybody's saying here tonight. And thanks again for putting the meeting together yesterday. I think that's a great thing and that we can plan the next one because I, I know we're going to, but I think the public is really appreciative, the residents and our customers appreciative of us getting before them and telling them where we're at. You know, it's really great. And Sammy did a, he does do an excellent job, so we got the right guy at the right time at the right place, so.
As long as it's not on the same night as TOP.
Yeah, yeah.
It's bad planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I've told people that wouldn't happen again.
Yeah, we try, we try, yeah.
We promised.
And I just want to say, thanks, thanks to our customers for, she was there, I know you were there and, last night, and appreciate the questions and the comments and just the patience and we're going to get there, we're, we're working on it really hard. So, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Well, I didn't expect to hear anything of director's comments about the Town of Paradise issues that came up on their agenda last night, which does affect PID, and that's the sewer issue. The vote was three to zero that there will be a local treatment plant with local dispersion of the waste treatment. Now, how does that affect you? That means water is going to go somewheres in our community. Golf course, oh, wait a minute, we don't have one of those, do we? Playgrounds, yes, we do have. Cemetery district, yes, we do have. Parks and Rec, yes, we do have. Not back into our drinking water supply. And apparently, in town's opinion, not back into fire hydrants either, which are very common in some communities. However, it does impact PID. As we use that water from that to irrigate with instead of metered water from PID, it will reduce the amount of water that is going for irrigation now in the places where it will be used as waste treatment water into irrigation. That means there's more to sell to people that are going to drink it. So when it comes to the new conservation measures and throwing out the 55 gallons per person per day, we want to encourage people to give up bottled water and drink PID water. That's a tough one to get to at this point in time, but if we're not spending as much money for water to go irrigating because the town is creating their own to irrigate with, well, we got to think of something.
Thank you, Ward.
Okay, so I think we're going to go into closed session now. Thanks for the comments.
There is, yeah, you have to read it and then allow some, allow the public.
You have to read it. Read the closed session items.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I, I forgot about that, okay.